Uh-oh, three council people together there. That's a quorum. Testing. Okay. Okay.
If everyone could at this time make sure your phones are on silent. I'd like to call to order the regular special meeting of the City of East Point City Council on Tuesday, July 19th, 2022. The time is now 7:00 PM. If we could all rise for the invocation given by Councilman Curley, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Most holy one, we come here tonight to do the business of our beloved city, East Point. Be with us as we make those decisions, not for ourselves, but for our community and for our citizens of the city. Be with those who are walking the streets in America, actually, Lord. They are hungry and they are homeless, and we have a special prayer upon them. We ask all these things in your name, Jesus the Living Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on to the first item on the agenda, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember DeMonico?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Here.
Councilmember Curley?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
The next item is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Sure. Madam Mayor Protem, I'll motion that we approve the agenda, but at a closed session regarding the purchase or lease of real property.
A second.
Motion of support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Moving on to the third item is hearing of the public. If anyone at this time wishes to be heard, you can step up to the podium. You'll be given three minutes to speak. If you could please state your name, we would appreciate it for the record.
My name is Walter Kubiak. I am a city resident, and I want to thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to come up here. I was over at Paul Joe Keel's house just recently, and the city has come along, marked five of his sidewalks of replacement and his entire approach. I have pictures of his approach and one slab. There's nothing wrong with it. There's nothing, nothing, nothing wrong with the approach, and they want to replace the whole thing. I want to know, and this is what they gave him, okay? This is not an ordinance. This is something the guy on Ten Mile wrote up, and he wants to replace Mr. Joe Keel's sidewalk that is 86 years old. Eighty-six. And the only thing that's, it's an aggregate sidewalk, the strongest, most durable sidewalk ever made. And he's, he wants to replace it because some of the aggregate is missing. That's not a reason. Long time ago, 2004, 2005, this gentleman right here, Dave Austin, was mayor. I come before Dave and council every opportunity during the summer to get our sidewalk replacement changed. The ordinance was terrible. There was nothing there to give direction to the people who were marking the X's. So finally, Dave came out in the neighborhood, and he walked around and saw what was being marked. He finally talked to me at the next meeting, and he said, "You're right." He says that they're just marking everything, anything. So he says, I said to him, I says, "I really have a start for a new ordinance." I says, "I've been to four or five cities. I says, "I've got their ordinances. I picked the best stuff off of them." I says, "Number one, we should replace only stuff that a tree root has uprooted, okay? That slab has to go." I says, "If the sidewalk is severely cracked, that needs to go."
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. And then, if you have a trip edge, that needs to go. And the last is if the top of the concrete comes up and it's rubble, that needs to go. The ordinance itself only mentions the sidewalk that's uprooted by a tree. I want to know what happened, who changed it, unless it wasn't ever changed, but the way it's written right now...
Your time is up, sir.
Okay.
If you could just give the information to Mr. Palucci over here, he will take down the information and the address so you can go on there.
Okay. I have a picture that I'd like you all to see because there's nothing wrong with his approach, and they marked it for complete replacement.
Does anyone else wish to be heard at this time?
Good evening. My name is Tony Delibai. I'm here because I have a rental property in the city of East Point. One of our tenants has been there for three and a half years. It's an elderly couple in their 70s, and we've never had any issues. This, this year, at beginning of the season, they received an invoice for grass cutting. They were not aware, we were not aware of it, so because the guy cannot actually cut his lawn, he has to rely on his two sons. Until the end of last year, they were doing the lawn maintenance for him, but now they have moved to Baltimore, New Baltimore, and Chesterfield, so he has to rely on them coming every week or every two weeks. Now, since we got this invoice, we have already hired the local company to take care of the lawn. However, as a one-time courtesy, we're hoping that the council can waive this invoice for the elderly couple. They're living on social security, and it might be a little bit difficult for them to afford.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
If you could just give your information over here to Ms. Holman. I do believe we are in the receipt of an email from you also.
Yes, yes.
Does anyone else wish to be heard at this time? With that, we'll close the first hearing of the public and move on to item four, which is the approval of the minutes.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we receive and file the minutes of the regular meeting of July 12th, 2022.
I'll support that.
Motion of support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
Item five, scheduled hearings, we have none. Item six, unfinished business, we have no unfinished business, so I guess we'll move on to reports from administration, and we will start this evening with reports from our city manager, Ms. Walton.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. We'll start off, our clerk's office has been working diligently to prepare for the primary election on August 2nd. Starting today, to register to vote, you actually have to come into City Hall and register at the clerk's counter. You're here all day and prepared to register, so please come in, register to vote, and get out on August 2nd to vote. We also have election inspector training this week, as well as two additional trainings next week. Moving into our Nine Mile construction, we're finally getting our water main parts over on Nine Mile, so hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll see some progress moving from Beechwood to Grashit. So you'll see our water main construction, mostly the sidewalk, but some cut over areas as well onto the Nine Mile Street. We're also working on the water meter upgrade. It is mandatory to upgrade the water meter, so if you have not, please get in touch with DPW, and we can coordinate to get SLC out to change your water meter out. It is pretty quick, takes like 15 minutes for them to come in and swap it out, easy and painless, so please get in touch with DPW to register and have your, your water meter changed out. And second, we have the Spindler Park concert tomorrow in the parks. We are watching for rain, so we have a severe thunderstorm warning, and we're watching out, and we are prepared and have contacted the vendors in the event that we do have to cancel. So right now, we're still planning for the event to take place, but we will make an announcement tomorrow morning, depending on the weather. If there is a formal cancellation, and it will be rescheduled. With that, that's the end of my report, but Mayor Protem and council, if you have any questions?
Council, you have any questions for the city manager at this time? All right, we'll move on to a report from our finance director, Mr. Blum.
Yes, Mayor Protem and council, I have nothing for this evening.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Blum? All right, we'll move on to reports from our city attorney, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of council. Just a couple of items. Council's in a receipt of proposed amended city council bylaws. I was seeking authority this evening to have these added to a future agenda, if there are any additions or deletions or other sections the council would like added. I'm certainly happy to do that, but if not, then I will ask that city administration to add them to a future agenda in the proposed form that they're currently having.
Oh, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I might, what I'm proposing, of course, can be changed when this comes back to us, and I would assume that would be the end of August, there'll be council members not present in the next couple of meetings, so I think we probably should have all five of us here, so whenever that is. I've just been thinking about this for a long time. We require our public, when they come up to the hearing of public, three minutes to speak. Regardless of how important it is, they only have three minutes. Like Walter came up, and he had other things, so if he wants to add anything, he has to wait till the end of the meeting. So my proposal's going to be this, that the council and mayor shall not use more than three minutes at the end of the meeting under, under council and mayor reports. So if you could add that, and if the council wants to discuss that and change it, or vote no on it, or delete it at the next meeting, or whenever we had it, they could do it.
So just for clarification, so mayor and/or council reports would be limited to a period of three minutes?
That's correct.
Okay. I will add that provision, and then what future meeting would the council like this added to a meeting perhaps in September, given, given the August, there will be some meetings where certain council members will not be present?
Yes, I think the first meeting in September.
That's fine with me.
Okay, thank you. Next item, Madam Mayor Protem, is a proposed cost recovery ordinance for certain emergency responses. I have circulated that proposed ordinance to city administration, and I anticipate that that will be on the next agenda, perhaps in August, but if the council would like to hold off, so we have a full council for that, then I can certainly add that to the September 1st agenda.
I think as we find on the August agenda.
First meeting in August? Thank you. And the final item is, I circulated the proposed Michigan Humane East Point Police Animal Control Contract. If the council has any questions or like anything changed on this, otherwise, I believe that this is ready to go. It's been approved by city administration, it's ready for council approval.
Yes, I think we need to add that to the next agenda, too.
Okay, I will do so. Thank you, that's all I have. Mayor Protem, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Albright at this time? All right?
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to the next item, which is new business, and item A is approval of the lead service line replacement program.
Sure, Mayor Protem, I'll motion we approve the engineering proposal from Anderson Eckstein and Westrick dated June 1st, 2022, and authorize the preparation of bid specifications for the general lead water service replacement program.
Sure.
Motion of support, please call the roll.
Wait, hold on, just...
Oh, throw it in.
One quick item, of course, I mean, I completely support this, and of course, we've talked about it many times. I was just hoping, and it looks like at the, little later in the year, right, we'll be going out to bid, I think they said at the end of the fall or something like that. I think we should talk about the ARPA funds soon, and I, I'd like to allocate some of that to get this done quicker, because, you know, we're, I mean, you know, we're basically one mistake away from, some people have lead in their water if it's not treated, so I think just the faster we do this, I know we've got 20 years, according to Eagle, but with the ARPA funds, I think that would be a great place to put it, and maybe we can discuss that before then, and maybe put a little bit more money each year over the next few years if council's interested. So I think I'd like to, you know, we can approve it now, and then maybe, you know, adjust it in the future with those funds.
Okay.
Good idea.
What, what about if grant money was available? Would that, I mean, as long as, I guess the same, same end goal, right?
Sure.
Okay. Are we able to look for grants for that? Are there any grants that you might need to look out?
We are currently, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay. That's all I had, thank you.
All right, so we have motion of support, can we please call the roll, please?
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
Moving on to the second item, approval of the planning commission recommendation to approve the special land use for the property located at 22345 Kelly.
Madam Mayor, I would move to approve the recommendation of the planning commission and approve the special land use for the property located at 22345 Kelly Road.
Second that.
Is there any conversation? All right, motion of support, can we please call the roll?
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
Moving on to item C, adoption of ordinance 22-1224.
Madam Mayor, or Madam Mayor Protem, I'm council, the guy was here if there's any questions.
Okay.
Whoa.
Oh. No, you spoke first.
Someone?
All right, I move that we adopt ordinance 22-1224, authorizing the city of East Point, $6 million water and sewer system junior lien revenue bond, series 2022.
Second that.
Any questions? We have motion and supports, we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Moving on to item D, the bid award for the outdoor early warning system.
Mayor Protem, I move that we approve the bid award for the outdoor early warning system, siren replacement to West Shore Services Incorporated, in the amount of $26,900.
Second that.
We have motion of support, is there any conversation?
Madam Mayor Protem, there is a mistake on the amount. There's a rebate available on the old siren, so the actual amount's $25,000, it's $25,650. So it's less than what's listed.
Oh, $25,000.
It was my quick typing, and I apologize.
$650?
So the actual amount's $25,650.
I think that's what we did on the last one, too.
All right, well, I amend my motion to reflect the proper amount of $25,650.
I will second that also.
Motion of support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the bid award for the vehicle exhaust removal system.
Madam Mayor Protem, I'll motion we award the bid for the vehicle exhaust removal system for the fire station to Magna Grip, I'm guessing is how you pronounce that, of Cincinnati, Ohio, the amount of $53,499.
A second. Burt.
Any discussion at this time?
I just had one question about that. That's just a replacement of the exhaust system we have right now?
Correct, so the current system, it's like a ceramic filter, and the new diesel emissions burn so clean that you can't put that system, like on the new truck that we have ordered. So this system that we're putting in now will take care of the vehicles of the future.
Ah, okay. Thanks for thinking ahead.
All right, motion and support, can we please call the roll?
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
I believe it's Councilmember Baker?
Yeah.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
And then moving on to item F, receive and file the city attorney review.
Mayor Protem Lucido, I move that we receive and file the city attorney review.
I'll second that.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Moving on to item nine, payroll and bills.
Madam Mayor Protem, I'll motion to pay the bills in the amount of $970,895.64.
Second.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
All right, and then we're moving on to the next hearing of the public, so if there's anyone that wishes to be heard at this time, you can step up to the podium.
I'd like to ask the attorney one question, and all I need is a yes or no answer. In all the time that you've been here, have the, has the city been sued by anybody who fell on an aggregate sidewalk because there were stones removed? And sued the city? Yes or no?
Yes.
Mr. Blum, I know that Tim Fran handles the MMR MA defense for sidewalk cases. Are you aware of any such cases in the last, say, 15 years?
No. There have been none.
Okay, so why are we replacing those sidewalks? Okay? You cannot replace those sidewalks with anything equal to durability or long-lasting. Okay? Now, I talked to the gentleman over there, he's going to come out with me to Paul's house and take a look at what they marked. You know, you have to give better direction to the people who are marking the X's, because the direction they have, they're not, they're not using this, because there's nothing there but sidewalks that are raised by tree roots, okay? You've got to put all the stuff that really makes a difference, like severely cracked and trip edges, and the top of the sidewalk comes up and creates rubble, that's where people can trip and fall. Those need to be in here, and that's what that guy should be using. He's making up his own. So you need to corral him and, you know, stop him from marking what he's marking, because he's hurting all the residents in this city. Paul's 86, and he's got a heart problem. He doesn't need this aggravation. And you don't want to come out to my house, there'll be a lawsuit. I worked construction, cement construction, two years while I was going to college. Don't tell me what's right and what's wrong. So please, change the ordinance and give them more to look at when they start marking, and maybe periodically have somebody go out and check to see what they're doing, because they're not doing the job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to be heard at this time? That closes the second hearing of the public. Moving on to mayor and council reports, and we'll start this evening with Councilman DeMonico.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Let's see, well, probably wasn't ready at 7:23 for a report. Are you counting down my three minutes? Well, I'm happy to see us continuing to replace, oh, she puts a timer right in front of me. Happy to see us replacing all the lead lines. We'll be doing it well ahead of the 20 years, and just hoping we do that as quickly as possible. And then also, just happy to see we'll be doing some water and sewer main maintenance additional there. And then also, just as mentioned before, primary election's two days from today, so make sure you go out, there's a ballot box at City Hall, you can drop it off anytime, 24/7. You can mail it in, but I'd recommend maybe at this point, dropping it off, and of course, you can vote on Election Day, and just remember a couple of the, or four of them, right, four polls, change location. If you forget, we'll have a note at the old location letting you know where to go anyway, so don't get too worried, and yeah, just make sure to vote, and I think that's, that's all I had for today, not even a minute.
Thank you, Councilman DeMonico.
Well, I could change my thing to the attorney to one minute instead of three.
I'm probably not going to vote for it either way.
Moving on, we'll move to Councilman Curley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to take an opportunity to read something that's really short to you, but while there's a lot of things going on in our country, in the world, and in our beloved city of East Point, be a reflection of what you'd like to receive. If you want love, give love. If you want the truth, be truthful. If you want respect, give respect. What you give out will return to you.
Thank you, Councilman. Moving on to Councilman Baker.
I've got nothing.
All right, thank you. So I just want to thank everyone that came out today for your time, and I do agree with some of the things that Mr. Juhubiak said. I know that I've had this issue before, where residents have reached out to me, because some of the times, the sidewalk replacements, it doesn't seem to really make sense, and it changes in different areas and different streets, so I agree, we probably should update that ordinance. Other than that, I don't have anything else this evening, I just wish everyone to enjoy their, the rest of summer, and be careful and be safe out there, it's going to be really hot this week, it's really hot tonight. Make sure you check on your elderly neighbors, especially those that don't have air conditioning to make sure that they're okay, and that's all I have this evening, so can we get a motion for adjournment?
We got a closed session.
Oh, yeah, motion, sorry. Motion to go in a closed session?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion and support?
Or should we put the...
Oh.
Mayor Protem, it would be a motion to go into closed session pursuant to MCL 15.260 subsection D to consider the purchase or lease of real estate.
I'll amend it as recommended by our city attorney.
And I'll second that.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
And we will go into closed session at 7:30.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
And we will go into closed session at 7:30.